Welcome.
I talked to you yesterday.
We will have sign up sheet in just a moment.
I did start the streamer cam.
With public comment. Pardon me?
We're on.
We're on. Good. Thanks. Very good. This got to your office today. Well, the other day was yesterday. I wasn't there. Is there going to be another new sale? Yes. Maybe I can make this. How that works? Yeah, I haven't. More seats? That's going to be a busy day because there's great speaker. There's more seats. Enough for everybody. This is a very extensive research. Excellent. So maybe we will need one chair for this. I saw this. We're good. I do have one more chair here. Actually, there's two more chairs here. We're going to get started. There you go. Okay. Hi. All right. I would like to call this budget workshop meeting of the Cook County Board of Commissioners to order. And we are going to have a public comment period. But the intention of this meeting is to get information from our consultants, Eellers, and to share our information about budget process. But we are allowing a half an hour for public comment. If I can just get a show of hands of who all is here to comment. Okay, six, about five or six of you. So I will call you one at a time. And we will, because we're having town hall meetings and further information meetings, I'm going to limit you to three minutes each today. So who would like to start? Hi. And would you come to the table here, please?
You can just pass the piece of paper.
Okay.
We just need to, we need everybody's name that wants to speak.
Great. So we won't move. We'll pass it here. Thank you. Okay.
Do you need my name and address?
Yes.
My name is Bob Maxon. I live in Grand Marais, 114 11th Avenue West.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's my second time here. My main concern is how I continue to afford to live in town with what's going on. I resent the fact that I read in the paper that you're articulating your process to address the young working people as opposed to people that don't want to pay taxes. I've always paid my taxes. I've lived here most of my life. I came out of the service and continued to live here, worked here my whole life. And now I'm retired here. I walk around my block. And I can count eight households that are retired people. And I'm not even going to count homestead. In the last 10 years, being on Social Security, three years, we got nothing. Last year, we got 0.3 percent. The average for the last 10 years has been about 2 percent. Then I see what you guys are trying to do with the levy limits. And I look at inflation for the last 10 years, and this averaged total 10 years is 18 percent, 1.8 percent. So you take your 1.8 for my 2 percent, and that's what Social Security has left me with. It doesn't add up. And a lot of people in the same boat that I am. Lived here all our life. We've worked here all our life. And now I feel I'm not a bona fide representative of the people that you're supposed to do. It's obvious you've given your department heads carte blanche when it comes to budget time. Nobody seems to know the two-letter word no. So in a nutshell, as far as I'm concerned, you people are giving liberals a bad name.
Thank you, Bob. Who would like to speak next? Green, if you could sign your own.
Tom Branovich. Second time here. Remind you of my background.
Could you please sign in?
I worked as a logistic support manager for the Air Force for many years. That was my job when I had a job before I retired. I managed programs in the hundreds of millions of dollars. Anybody can solve for zero. The hard part is looking at that budget and your income and figuring out where cuts need to happen. And I haven't seen you guys do this. The fellow before me, can you say no? Evidently not. Overly generous health insurance benefits for county employees. Holy smokes. I'm paying 550 bucks over that to insure self plus one as a retired federal employee. What do county employees pay? How did that go past you guys? Unbelievable. That needs to be renegotiated. Also, Jeff, last year, you mentioned you didn't have enough time to negotiate with the healthcare provider for the increases that you were looking at. Did you do that for this coming year? That has to be done. My wife was an administrator in the Twin Cities for a healthcare group. And every year, she was faced with this. She negotiated with those people and told them, hey, if you can't give me this, I'll go to another provider. Financial burden of the Y. Holy cats. Self-sustaining, and it's not. Got to get a handle on that. Limited return on investment on the EDA. How many millions of dollars have you given to the EDA? What do we have in return? And now we're going to go into the childcare business. You've got to be kidding me. We're going to build a childcare, and we're going to compete with private enterprise so the county can do childcare. Unbelievable. Got two members on the board. I don't know you, Bobby. Where's Myron? Myron, I read your campaign ads. You campaigned on getting a hold of this stuff, and you blame previous members for the mess we're in. So hopefully, you two are going to have the guts enough to stand up and say no once in a while. And I plead with the other three of you to please exercise some restraint. I don't know what your vision for this county is. Do you want to turn us into Sun Valley, Idaho, or Park City, Utah, so only extremely wealthy people can live here? I've been here for four years, and I hate to say this, in such a beautiful place that we elected to live, that we're questioning our decision now, wondering how long we can afford to live here. So please. I have no problem paying fair amount of taxes. I just don't want to see multimillionaires and billionaires get tax cuts. And all I ask of you people is to spend my money wisely. And I haven't seen that in the four years I've been up here.
Thank you. Next.
Lloyd Speck, Grand Marais. It must be a swear word for most of you county commissioners. But anyway, I guess most of the people back here all appear for about the same reason I'm here, except for one. And what Bob and Tom both said is pretty much what I got to say also. But what I don't understand is, after what this board went through last year, why things have taken so long to sink in? You've had since last, basically, December to figure out ways to make cuts and to balance a budget. But I, but after what happened, I don't see any planning that's been done. And we have an administrator that we pay a six-digit figure to. What has he did to save this county money? These taxpayers? What have any of you county commissioners did to save a taxpayer $1? Last year, I told Mr. Catwell, call me up. You can tell me where you saved the county a buck. You know? We hired an administrator to give advice in maybe several different ways of how you can balance a budget and keep us in with what other counties spend. We're all off in stock. I said it last year. And I'll say it again. I talked to other county commissioners, not just from Lake County. Lake County keeps their budget this year at 3% to 4%. And they want to settle at 3.5%. And I guess that's what amazes me. I just can't understand why we can't get a grip on things here. I mean, we're on set incomes. Social Security has had a pay raise of 1.6% in 10 years. You know? And, and we only, we've got a small amount of population here, and that's our problem. Population supposedly has only went up 30 people in 15 years. We've got a name for ourselves up here. That's probably why you're having a hard time finding a county engineer. I mean, all we want to do, there's six generations in my family that are here counting my grandchildren. I'd like to be able to stay here, but at the rate it's going, what a 42% increase over three years is ludicrous. You know? I tried to get ahold of Channel 6 to come up here today to see what's running this place nuts. It don't make sense. It's totally ridiculous. And I don't believe business and people should have to be forced to leave their county they were born and raised in because of poor fiscal decisions. When you've only got probably 3,000 people paying taxes, now that includes seasonal people. We can't have everything. And it's no different with me and my predicament now. I had to sell a cabin for over $100,000 less than what I had into it because I know I couldn't keep up with a 42% tax increase over three years. And, and our county commissioners are paid the highest salary of any county commissioners I know of, $22,250 a year. Contributed through single, probably about $600 only towards your health insurance premium, if you're single. And, and I mean, things have got to be brought back under perspective to be able to keep people in this county and want people to move here. It's gotten totally out of control.
Thank you, Lloyd. Your time is up.
But anyway, just one more sentence. This is probably the most unqualified and dysfunctional board that this county has ever seen in the history of Cook County.
Next. I probably shouldn't have read that piece of paper about being respectful. I trust you'll all be respectful. Thank you.
Brad Thompson, Grand Marais. I guess I can't afford the way the property taxes are going up. I'm not sure what I'm going to have to do, but it can't go up the way it's projected for the next three years either. I don't know what your, your plan has to be, but I guess I plead with you guys all to realize that you're living here too, and every decision you make is going to affect your lives and your, your family's lives, your friends' lives. I guess one of the last meetings I was at, I didn't get up and say my piece, and I was called as, I guess I wasn't called in period. There's only, there's 100 of us back here, and six people said something, so there's only six against the program. That's the biggest reason I had to get up here and say, say my opinion and where I'm sitting, that I'm scared. I don't feel like I can improve any of my properties. I'm afraid that'll just increase my values and put me further in the hole. So I guess that's, that's all there is to it. I'm kind of scared right now.
Thanks, Brad. Next.
I'm Todd Sylvester, Grand Marais. I pretty much have to agree with what everybody said here. I'm nobody special. But I have been through multiple major surgeries this year. They told me to file for disability. But as you know, your tax increases won't probably let me live here because the amounts don't equal your raises and their income and what it takes to live here. And I am nobody special, as you know, and you. But I think I speak for a lot of people. I helped my mom live here and die here, just like Lloyd's doing and many other people. And it's hard. And I just would like you to have more of an open heart to other people than big business and what Mr. Boyd wants you to do. On the name of big business. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Next. Okay. I think we will begin.
I'll just say one. It's real short. I don't need to go up there.
We can pass you the paper?
Yeah. I think this community has lost. I grew up here, born and raised here. We pay taxes with my family. I've been a resort over there since 1938. And what I see here is a community that's lost its small hometown feel. And it is becoming a corporation up here. That's the way I see it. It isn't, it isn't really a pleasure to be here as much as it was, as it used to be. And it's not that I can't afford the taxes or pay, I don't, who likes to pay? But I never complained. But you people are really ridiculous on the amount of increases you've had. I've never seen anything like it on any board here before, ever. And every single year, we have to go through this. You take all that damn fun out of living here. You really need to get under control and at least look at finances like they're your own. That's all.
Thank you, Ron. Okay. So the intention of this meeting now will be to receive information from our consultant. And Chris Mickelson is here from Eellers to help us become more strategic and more fiscally responsible. That's why we hired him. That is our intention. I also just wanted to mention that there will be town hall meetings starting this week, tomorrow night, 7 o'clock in.
Mitral.
Mitral. Thursday night, Birch Grove, 7 o'clock. The 11th of September, well, the 6th of September. Golden Town Hall?
It's going to be available on the website, but I'll make copies for anybody who wants one now.
And then September 11th, back in Grand Marais. Thank you.
Should I include them to be advertised anywhere?
They've been advertised, and they will continue to be advertised. A big press release went out on that today, and I think other press releases have gone out with that information prior to today. That's one of our missions, is to make sure everybody knows what we intend and our intention is to have good attendance at these town hall meetings where people can express their feelings about the levy and to also inform people about why we're making these decisions. And that's, that's what we're trying to do, be a little bit more heads up on this process. So that by December, when we make that final decision, we will have heard people, we will have made good decisions based on excellent information. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Lloyd Chair and board members, members of the public. My name is Chris Mickelson. I work for Eellers and Associates. We are a municipal financial advisory company based out of the Twin Cities. Myself and Bruce Campbell, a colleague of mine, were up here a month ago and presented the preliminary financial management plan in a board workshop. And happy to be back today. Bruce actually had to be in Colorado today on business. He wanted to be here, but was unable to attend. The FMP that we presented a month ago, what it did primarily was, it looked at the program ideas that the county had coming into that meeting. And it determined the green line on page two of this handout, which is the percent increase in total tax levy. And that gave, that gave us, that gave the county some general idea of if we are to move forward based on what the operating budget increases are looking like and what capital program, capital project needs are forecasted to be. This is kind of the ballpark where we see ourselves in. Following that, the county had several meetings at both the staff and board level and determined this 14.9, 13.9, 12.9 approach is, is a path to consider as of now and a path to pursue in modeling. And so for this FMP, what I did was, I basically backed into 14.9, 13.9, and 12.9 for the years 18, 19, and 20. And with that, I was able to see primarily how much revenue that would generate to spread among the three major funds, the, technically four, the general fund, the debt service fund, the public health and human services fund, and then the road and bridge fund. And we assumed for the other funds, those being airport building, YMCA, et cetera, we assumed just basic inflation of a few percent on those. And so did not, did not basically spread the additional revenue among those more minor funds. And so with this additional 18 levy, what, what we used that for was primarily general fund and public health and human services fund for the, for the operating budget increases. And then that allowed each fund, as you can see, page one, ending fund balance is unchanged for general fund. And page four, public health and human services, the fund balance remains unchanged there. And you can see up above where it's, it's citing a, for public health and human services, 6.8% inflater and a 5.73% inflater for, for the general fund. That's basically a function of how much additional operating budget money we have relative to the previous year. So rather than coming up with a standard inflater and then figuring out how much money we have to spend, we figured out how much money we have to spend relative to the proposed additional levy revenue and then determine how much technically that's inflating from the previous year. You can see in the road and bridge and debt service funds where this additional levy revenue is, is being allocated rather than operating budget increases, it's going to the 17, 18 transportation sales tax and levy supported road projects, so that one capital project, as well as east-west corrode improvement in the road and bridge fund, that capital project. And then in the debt service fund, the proposed courthouse improvements and the community center phase two improvements. And so in a nutshell, what Bruce and I kind of labeled, phase one of this would be 2018. Phase two, 2019, 2020, and we can get into that in a minute. And then phase three would be 2021 and beyond. So in phase one, in 2018, if you're wondering, where does 14.9% go? It goes to additional operating expenditures in general fund and additional operating expenditures, public health and human services fund, and then the capital project needs in the debt service fund and the road and bridge fund. So I could maybe pause there if, if there are any questions, and we can dive deeper as, as you may want.
That sounds really good. Any questions so far?
It's backwards.
Just to remind you, the first bill we got to pay is the $550,000 of bills we didn't pay until December. That's where the additional, that's where the capital is, deferred capital payments is inflated this year.
Any questions? That was a good comment, so. It's carryover from last year because we didn't make our balanced budget last year.
Half of the 2017, right here.
61 on people.
Why wasn't the budget met? We're not going to allow questions from, public comment period is over. I ask you to respect us. We're going to have our discussions. You can participate by listening. And I would invite you to make notes and, well, unless we.
When do we ever get any feedback? Seriously, we have never given any feedback.
We have the town hall meetings coming up for feedback.
Will you answer questions? Do we have a dialogue with you and us?
During the town hall meetings, that's exactly the format that is proposed. This is a workshop for us to review the financial work that Bruce has prepared for Eellers.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. The intention of this meeting is really to hear from our consultant and get the information that we need, combine it with the information we know so far to know where we stand. The town hall meetings are for public input, and we will be able to respond to those questions during those town hall meetings.
That is.
That is the intention of this.
That's great. That's, that's all we did to know. Thank you.
Yes, yes. I'm sorry I wasn't perfectly clear about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just to Jeff's point, the, thank you for the reminder, Jeff. The deferred capital costs from '17 ended up getting, getting entered into 2018 road and bridge fund, page three. That's, that's line 22. Yep. And so that's, I would add to my original comment of road and bridge fund additional levy dollars going to the capital projects as well as some deferred costs from the previous year.
Great. Okay. If there are no more questions, we will proceed. Thank you.
So just to discuss briefly what we kind of titled the phase two of this project or this financial management plan being the 2019 and 2020 budget years. So what we were able to do with, with these years is assume the basic 3% inflater across the board. And this, we were able to leave the general fund and public health and human services levies, again, unchanged in fund balance. And we allocated the additional, in this case, 13.9%, or the levy dollars that are captured from additional levy to the road and bridge fund to build up the fund balance there. And so on page, what would be page three? You can see there in, in 2020. We're, or 2019, pardon me, and then 2020, we're adding to fund balance so that we can buy down the proposed 10.65 million dollar issue so that instead it's 7.65 million. And so that's, that's primarily where 2019, 2020 additional levy dollars would be directed.
Thank you. Can we just stop and breathe for a second?
So. I would just go back and remind everybody, the reason that we're doing a long-range financial plan is because we know we have long-range capital needs that we haven't accounted for anywhere. And we've got an RFP out on our, on our, on our law enforcement center, and we don't know if the recommendation is going to be a coat of paint or a brand-new building. But we don't have a plan that identifies our capacity to do any of this. And at this point in time, we're having to borrow money because we don't have a quarter million dollars to fix the roof and the windows on this facility. And that lack of planning is unacceptable. We have to take care of our plant so that we can continue to provide the services that we have. All of the assumptions in here are shots in the dark that Brady and I gave, mostly I gave, to Bruce and to Chris so that they could plug them in there to show some amount of capacity. And all of those assumptions are things that we can change. This tool lets us work and manage those assumptions. So again, this is really just helping us look at where we are, what we know are coming up looking at us. coming up looking at us, and how we can possibly get there to have the least amount of impact on the levy going forward. Chris is demonstrating that if we actually balance the budget, then we can get to the point of taking on a significant amount of additional capacity without an additional burden on taxpayers. But if we honestly don't front load this at one point, then it just ramps up on the backside.
I wish that I had, I could make that statement right from this start.
And I apologize, that's actually the last two points in my notes. Jeff feed me to it. And so if we could, if we could hit the positivity for one more minute.
Yes.
The punchline, the punchline in this, the proof is in the numbers, so to speak. If you look at that green line and if you look at, admittedly, phase one, what we've dubbed phase one and phase two, you know, 14.9, 13.9, 12.9, that might look a little scary. But if you look what follows, more or less 3% across the board with some major capital project needs being addressed while maintaining a stable levy. So that's, thank you, Jeff, for getting up and seeing the wood for the trees there.
Yes, yes.
So regarding 19 and 20, is there anything that you'd like me to explain further on that? Did I go too quick in just trying to point out where the, assuming a 13.9% levy is seen in 2019, is there anything else that you'd like me to explain?
So these 14.9, 13.9, 12.9 are bonding and addressing capital projects, but we don't have...
No.
No, okay.
The 14.9, 13.9, 12.9 is one of three options when I give, December 21st last year, when I didn't want to do what we went through last year, I wanted us to have a longer-term plan. Contrary to what people may believe, December 21st, I came up with a list of assumptions of the new costs that we're going to have and made some calculated guesses related to wages, health insurance, fund balance, debt, and the need to pay out some of this outstanding capital. Those basic assumptions, if we don't change the primary level of service that we have, remember, since I've been here, we've added eight staff to the health and human services because community demand has increased. If we don't change our service level assumptions, then we have to carry this staff that we've approved, one piece at a time. And that means that we're going to be $3.5 million short over three-year period. So 15, 14, 13 represents $3.5 million from the only source we have control over, which is levy. I'm not saying this is what we need to do. I'm saying, based on the budgets that my department heads have submitted, that this is what we should do, that our budgets are as lean as they can be, that we've got the right number of staff once we fill these positions and we can provide for the needs of this community if we do this. And if we need to solve it some other way, then I need direction from the board on what that looks like. So 15, 14, 13 solves for an operational deficit because Lloyd says you haven't saved us any money. And I will counter and say you guys haven't ever budgeted enough money for the services that you're providing. You have an operational shortfall. The state and federal agencies are keeping pace. Our percent of revenue is 30%. If you want to compare us to some other county, then look and see that they're funding half of their expenses by levy. If you want to compare us to Lake County and say, let's have a 3% or 4% increase, that's great, but let's set our net effective tax rate at 65% like theirs is first, and then I can give you 3% and 4%. We have to solve to the fact that we have not had an operational budget to support the operations that we have. And that's what 15, 14, 13 is. It could also be 30% this year and 4% next year. It could be 20, 12, 8. And in our conversations, we said we'd rather see a balanced approach in phase of N. And so that, those are the numbers we're using. So those don't have anything to do with capital or debt or bonding or anything at this point. They're to solve for an operational deficit.
So it doesn't include our roof and windows at this point?
So I...
It does to a degree because we're also making some assumption for us to carry over the debt service payments that we have to take on some short-term bonding for some immediate capital needs.
And that's just what I need to know. This is my second term, so I have sat through previous boards telling staff that we will budget for you to not have a raise, and then we approved a raise after we didn't budget for a raise. I have sat through Pat coming in and you two working together to come up with some way to figure out how to pull money out of your butt for a camera system that should have been budgeted for for 20 years. I have sat through Brian being told for the last five years not to fix things. I stood at my cousin's house right there. The frames of the windows are coming out upstairs. Thank you, Brian. Thanks for asking. It's not this board, and I'm not mad at you guys, but this has been years and years of us as commissioners making really poor decisions. So thank you for coming and trying to help us get out of this mess.
Great.
I'm going by what I just heard from the people. People aren't able to sustain this. They're scared.
And honestly, we're really, we're just talking to Chris now about the assumptions and our ability to maintain capital going down the road. Our conversation after that is going to get into our assumptions and what we're going to do, what options we have. I will represent to you that 80% of what's in our request for next year is mandated. Aside from the pass-through stuff, the stuff we can do because we've got sources of funding, dedicated roads, all of that, 80% of what we do is mandated. We don't have a choice. 10% is administrative. 10% is what we're doing in preventative, whether it's in health and human services and public health or what we're doing in maintenance on the highway roads that's not specifically... Lloyd still here? Oh, yeah. All right. Thanks. And we can put fine numbers on that. I can give you a listing of all of our employees and which amount of hours they have. And if people say you don't need an administrator, you don't need an administrator, but you'd have to have an HR director and you're not going to save that much money. And in all honesty, if I wasn't here saying uncomfortably, you need to take a look at your future, you wouldn't be taking a look at your future. And five years down the road, you'd say, we don't have any fund balance. Now what do we do? And you'd be facing a severe crisis. We still have the ability because we don't have the ability to come out of this without having a significant impact. If we raise our taxes, 15, 14, 13, and Lake County raises theirs, 4, 4, 4, our tax rate is still significantly under the areas of we're still going to be in the bottom 10% of the counties in the state. And I'm not saying it's not a burden on other people. But I will specifically say there are programs to assist people who actually have financial need and they should be using those programs. They really should. They're right on the back of our property tax table. If somebody's really got a burden on paying their property taxes, the state has those programs built right into the system.
Budget for those programs.
The thing that makes us different, the thing that makes us comparable to a mountain ski resort is the fact that people with outside money have come in and raised the cost of housing in this community. That's the only thing that's significantly higher in this community than anywhere else. And that, that's unfortunate. We're not taxing people out of their homes. People moving into town and paying unreasonable prices for houses are buying us out of our homes. And I've been in other resort communities in the state. You go to Detroit Lakes in Minnesota, and the lakes were all little 30, 80-year-old, 60-year-old, little 750-square-foot cabins, and now they're all million-dollar mansions. We've got the same issue here, except we're so small, we don't have any $79,000 or $89,000 houses.
And 58% of all of our owners are non-residents.
They're up to 58%.
58% are seasonal recreational owners.
So those are challenges.
To put, it's maybe kind of easy for the guy from a couple hundred miles away to drive up here and, you know, tell you, we're not talking about a whole lot of money here, but to put it into context, if you look at the, if you look at the blue box on the bottom of page two, that shows what the median value home in this county is valued at. As of 2017, it was about $247,000. And so the county taxes on that one would be ballpark $1,120. What a 15% levy increase at the county level would do is raise that to $1,297.
Thank you for that insight.
So we're talking about $10 a month, approximately.
That's the perspective we're talking about.
I'm talking about your Netflix contribution.
Yes.
Yes.
This is based on what the perception is of the work that I do in the office, you know, to try and make sure that everybody's valuation is correct. You know, and that's what we're in year five of a five-year plan. If we get those figures where they should be, where everybody's paying their fair share, the numbers are easier to equate, they're easier to look at on this perspective. And yes, Bobby, it is still a burden for a lot of people in this county. I understand that completely. I have many conversations with people about this because I am involved in it. But the reality is, like Jeff said, who's driving the bus for the values in this county is people that don't live here, that have money. I see every sale that occurs in this county, and when they're paying $300,000 for a house in Grand Marais that was five years ago, $200,000, that creates the issues that we're dealing with. However, that doesn't answer any of the budget questions. Values value, taxes are taxes. You know, the needs of this community in this county as a whole is a budget number. And it hasn't been going down. The needs have expanded, public health has expanded, you know, in a lot of ways that we can never predict, so.
Is coming from the guy who lost staff?
Yeah, I lost staff. I have more staff to give up.
And then to also reiterate the place where people who really can't afford this, their taxes, any tax preparer will do the paperwork to get the refund for anybody whose income shows that they can't afford these taxes.
And Jeff touched on that.
It happens all the time.
Jeff touched on that as well. Heidi and I had a conversation about the property tax refund program that's in place here in Minnesota. And I know the calculations have been done at the state level where the state of Minnesota figures in the refunds within the property tax system. And I also understand that only 40% of the people that could qualify actually apply for it because there hasn't been enough, enough information out there to let people know in the past. And I'm trying to change that, trying to make it more accessible for more people to understand and apply for those property tax refunds, which is fairly significant, you know, in the end, so.
Great.
I guess while we're talking about it, I did a little research. And some of this has been referenced before. But I went online and I tried to find objective, you know, information. And I'm certainly not advocating anything, I'm just talking about information. And I know that some people don't want it for taxes, some people can't afford it, can't perceive it. But I think it's important to look at statistics because we only know where we're at when we compare ourselves to someone else, but we have to look at, you know, the public as well. So according to the Minnesota Property Tax Calculator, that's online if you want to research this, our average tax rate in looking at this is 4.485%. Point 485%. Property taxes on this issue, and I think they look at things differently in 12, 13. When you look at that in context of all the other counties, one is lower than us, and that's Aitken, they're at .46. And so here they have our median, median home value at $240,500, our median annual property tax is $1150. So that's an indicator, you know, what our taxes are. Then taking that one step further, another calculator looked at bang for the buck. And here they looked at schools as well.
Where'd you find that?
It's online. If you do research, just do a Google research for Minnesota tax. This one comes from Asset. It's, I believe it's a group that, you know, wants to look at, you know, what is the state of affairs. And I could get into all kinds of national statistics and so forth, but I don't know if that's important. But the bang for the buck is when they look at certain values in the community, and we came in second on that one as well. And there they look at school issues.
And you're talking second lowest.
Well, we have the second best bang for the buck in...
Oh, okay.
Second highest.
That's, okay.
Yeah, so which, property tax, which counties are getting the best bang for the buck? And so we're number two as well. And they do that by rating, you know, services and what you're getting. It also throws in the school tax.
Thanks, Lloyd. Yes, thanks. So it's good at this point to talk perspective. So great. So we should proceed with that perspective as we go forward with our conversation then.
Sure. So if you use 2018 through 2020 make enough sense, then maybe we could touch briefly on 2021 and beyond. What we've modeled in the general fund in 2021 and beyond, you can see on the, what we have is line 44, the unassigned fund balance as a percent of annual expenditure. That is slowly creeping down. You can see the percent creeps from 85 down to 82, down to 80. And that's a, that's a function of not adding to fund balance. You can see in, in line 35, that dash indicates that it's a zero, that expenditures equal total revenue, which means nothing is being added to fund balance. However, your expenditures are continuing to creep up as a result of inflation. And so unassigned fund balance relative to those expenditures would be coming down. And so what we, what we started in 2021 would be adding small amount to fund balance so that we're maintaining at least 75% of fund balance relative to expenditure. So you can see in 2021, 79, and by 2026, it kind of stays there at 78. To do that would require $100,000 be contributed, and that's line 40 and 41, indicating that an additional $100,000 would be going to fund balance. And you can see if you look at 2020 compared to 2021, that 2021 is $100,000 over what 2020 was, and that continues on. So 150 would be added in 2022 and so on. And by contributing a little bit each year to fund balance, you're able to maintain that at least 75% relative to expenditure. And that's something that Standard and Poor's and other rating agencies are actually, Standard and Poor's is giving the county a one-notch upgrade right now as a result of strong fund balance. And so if that fund balance were to come down, that one-notch upgrade would go away, actually.
Which helps in our bonding.
Exactly. Which helps the county achieve a lower cost of capital, borrowing cost.
So are you saying that we don't contribute anything until 2021, or we do a little bit each year?
We're saying that, you know, the way this model is laid out, we're not contributing anything until 2021. And even then, come 2021, it would only be $100,000. So, you know, relative to total expenditures, still a relatively small amount, $100,000 is small relative to $10 million. And then we would continue that on until 2026. And the reason why we didn't build it in until 2021 is we considered 85%, 82%, 80%. That's a very strong fund balance relative to expenditure. And even 70, you know, 78% is incredibly strong fund balance relative to expenditure. It's just we don't, we don't want to see it go below 75% because we don't want to be at risk of losing that one-notch upgrade that SMP is currently giving the county. So that's where some of the, some of the funds would be directed in 2021 and beyond. What we also built in is if you go to the debt fund, it would be page five, listed as page seven here because there's a few in between, but it would be your last page. You can see as of 2021, the existing bonds would be redeemed. And so there would be no debt service payment on the existing bonds. You can see that $336,000 principal amount in 2020. That's the last payment on that outstanding issue. And so what was going to happen here, 2020 into 2021, is a pretty substantial dip. And we thought that would be a good opportunity to kind of balance that and actually start building up the fund balance with a $1.5 million cash contribution basically to the debt fund, which you can see flows through and adds to fund balance in 2021. That's line 30, summing and building up line 31. And then the same thing happening in 2022, $1.5 million being contributed to the debt fund so that you now can contribute... fund, so that you now can contribute 3 million in cash to the proposed 2022 issue, so that it's no longer a $10 million bond shown on line 35 near 2022, but rather a $7 million bond. And so the county would realize less interest expense as a result of bonding for 7 million rather than 10 million, and you're doing that by, by planning, by preparing for that, by setting some money aside in your debt fund.
It's really exciting. And I believe right now we have, is it 7 million, Brady, in the?
About seven and a half.
Seven and a half.
In the general.
General fund, yeah.
And there's, so that, the number Brady is referencing is line 48, if you look at 2017, on page one. And in the, in the debt service fund itself, there is, as of the end of 2016, about 1.375 million in any fund balance, so that's, that's cash sitting in the debt service fund.
Got a question? Doctor, please. This one notch, I've tried to study something about, you know, the implications of bonding and so forth. This one notch, could you estimate some kind of value of what that would be over a 10-year period, or, you know, I mean, a notch is a notch.
Right.
But I, could you assign some kind of value? I mean, what, what is that worth over 10 years, looking at all the variables?
You know, it's not a very specific answer, but I would say many thousands of dollars. You, you don't know what the market is going to do any given day, and you don't know what credit spreads are going to be relative to credit quality, but I, I would say that it's, it's important that the market would definitely, the market does look more favorably on a double A plus than a double A, and so a notch definitely means something. So I would say many thousands of dollars.
Let's say on a million.
Yeah, on, on a million issue, so if you're looking at a 20-year bond, I'd say maybe, maybe 15 to 20,000.
Okay, thank you, that's.
In, in today's market?
Yes.
More than 5 or 6% and you're paying a surfe, a surcharge of 7, of 2%, more, the spread is going to be bigger, the more the market goes. And, and we're going to get to a list of other questions later, one of them says, why not use the fund balance? Well, in all honesty, if we want to continue to roll our operational deficit using our current fund balance and go with the 4%, 5% increase in our, in our levy, we can do that, and in six years we'll be up.
Yeah.
Because this year we would need 100,000, next year we'd need 950, and a year after that we'd be 1.2.
It takes a long time to build up a fund balance like that, and it's really easy to go away, fast.
Yeah.
And, bond rating is only one aspect, though, to me, it's, it's a secondary aspect, it's the safety aspect. We're a small county, we're dependent on all these state and federal revenues.
Safety and independence.
Yeah.
Just what these people.
We just, we just went through a recession that could turn into a depression. It's a big safety issue, I think, or something like that, it would give you, give you the soft landing, and it wouldn't have to be a depression, it could be the federal government finally facing deficit, their fiscal deficits, and if they finally just take action sometime in the next, whatever, five, 10, 15 years, it would not be, it would not be unlikely that they would be looking at things like our federal payments and things like that.
Our PILT now is 1.2 million?
No, we're authorized for 2,025,000 just on the BWCA. Now, they sequestered that, so they cut seven and a half percent of that, so we really get about 1.879, well, we're authorized for 2,025.
Because I know there is, you know, in the Trump administration budget proposal, there was a big, you know, big cut in that.
And, and there's three programs, there are two specifically. One is the general PILT that is the same formula around the country, but BWCA is separate.
Okay.
We get, we get a lot more from BWCA than we would get from the formula, the regular formula for PILT.
What is that formula, what is?
What's that?
What is the formula of PILT?
It's complicated, but it's, it's.
It must have been made by the Minnesota legislation.
We get 200,000.
200 and some, okay.
Off of the regular formula, it would be higher if we didn't have BWCA, but because those payments are deducted when they give us the PILT, but we're so limited by population, and we, we need a law change to get anything even close to what we get now, because we have a population of 5,000, so, it severely limits that formula.
I'm sorry.
To say it's complicated, those are great questions, but I also want to make sure that everybody, that all the commissioners know, in your book, you have all that detail. And if you don't know where to find that detail, Brady or I would be happy to sit down and go through this with you and show you where you can find those numbers, because all those numbers are represented in here, and you need, to be familiar with the general budget, but also the specific budget, and if you need time to sit down and look at it, that we'll be happy to do that.
So I don't want to oversell the, the fear idea, but it's, it's, I wouldn't want to see that, that money dissipate, it should begrudgingly, if you're doing it, and think about, and think about maybe putting it back, if you do.
I haven't talked about putting it back since I got here.
How much are we taking out over the years?
All a lot.
Well, you can see in 2015, that, that big red number on page one.
Okay, that's it, okay.
So that's, that's definitely a part of it.
Thank you, that helps.
Well, that does help.
And it's relative, because as you can see, it's, it's a percentage of your operating expenditures, so when our operating expenditures were half, yeah, we didn't have as big a fund balance, we didn't have as much expense to cover, so it, it should grow as time goes on.
So I think, as far as the detailed information, the last point that I would bring your attention to would be, in the years 2021 through 2025, if you look the road bridge fund, that's page three, we allocated some additional funds in the, the property tax levy, so that, again, like, like we did in the debt service fund, so that 3 million in cash could be built up in fund balance to buy down the 2025 proposed debt issuance. And so you can see, 2021, there's a positive fund balance or positive revenue over under expenditure, that's line 32 for 2021. The same thing is happening in 22, 23, 24, and then that can be used for, for 3 million in, in cash to buy down the debt in 2025, so very similar to, to what we put in the, in the debt service fund to buy down that issue. If that makes enough sense, I think, the last, the last thing that I would say would just be the, the two, two takeaways would be, like we discussed earlier, by, by targeting around a 15%, 14%, 13% in the, in the early years, you're allowed to have a relatively modest and stable levy increase going forward from, from 21 and beyond, and you're also able to manage across the board operating cost inflation of about 3% after the first year, while, as you can see on, you know, on page one, maintaining that general fund balance in excess of 75%, and then also saving up some cash so that three of those bond issues can be bought down by 3 million per issue, so that's buying down 9 million in, in bonding costs. And the second point that I would make is that this model really is just a function of the inputs, it's not necessarily a recommendation on our part, or on county staff's part, or on anyone's part, it's really more so for illustrative purposes to facilitate the discussion. And so, you know, keep in mind that we can certainly adjust as, as you see fit, as you would like, but this just kind of gives you some context relative to the, you know, 2018, 2019, and in 2020, proposed increases.
It's going to take a while to digest.
This is, this is a response to the illustration in last December that showed the, the loss due to lack of financial planning. Remember the illustration that showed that over 25 years, we'd had an average levy increase of 4.3%, but it's been all over the board? If it had been consistently 4.3% every year, we would have the same levy this year that we would have, that's how averages work, and we would have collected 27 million dollars more in revenue. So we, we, the power of planning, whatever the assumptions are, we have to make a commitment to a long-range financial plan. The assumptions based on our operating disparity that we've been rolling as far back as I can see, and it's very evidenced in 2015 was the last year we had, we, we budgeted $780,000 of general fund balance to mitigate levy, and then we spent down close to another million dollars between the highway department and the health and human services because we just underfunded those two budgets, and that's why it shows 1.7 million dollars there. And that's, there's an illustration, how, how quickly does 7 and a half million go if you spend it like that? So, whatever assumptions, and that's, that's the conversation we have to have at the budget level, that's the policy level discussion that the board has to have, is what are our assumptions? Are assumptions valid? And I'm, I'm prepared to share with you some of those again and refine those, and those are the questions we should be asking. And then, and then if we, if we need to, then we go to our department heads and they say, Pat, can, what, you know, we've had this conversation, but we've got two new commissioners this year who haven't heard that conversation. What happens if we need to get by with three fewer staff at, at law enforcement? And we talk about what level of service we provide, what level of public service, public protection, hours of coverage, I mean, we can make those choices, but they have, there's a, there's a cost effect of doing that. We can, we can go back in the highway department to say, it takes five days to clear a snow A couple of very important points is, we have the same requirements on us as Cook County, as Hennepin County does, we have to meet all the state statutory obligations. Ramsey County has 288 miles of county roads, we have 312. We've got 200-plus miles of gravel roads, we've got three inches of rain this weekend. Those graders operate at about two and a half, three miles an hour when they're working effectively, I don't know, maybe you can push them a little faster. It takes a while to provide those services. So, response time is one of the most significant policy assumptions that we have to make, is what's, what's an acceptable response time. And then when we get to health and human services, we really don't have very much choice. If we have such a caseload, we have to have sufficient staff to carry that caseload. And I know publicly there are people who think that there's a lot, we have a lot of extra people here, I will represent that we don't. Everybody that I know that works for this, for this organization leaves work undone every day because there isn't enough time to do it all, and we have to prioritize, and that's, that's the truth, and if we want to make it, if we want to change our level, then we have to really prioritize. So I don't know if there's any, anything else, Chris, related to the updated tool? I, I looked at it, I said, that's great, look at how much capacity we have without having a significant impact on levy. Because the 2018, 2019, 2020 impact is something we're talking about operationally, not related to our capacity to take on projects. And remember, most of these projects, some of them are buildings, some of them are our roads, and we, this also shows that additional transportation sales tax is, is a source of revenue. The, the good news about that is we have capacity to do more projects, the bad news is we're immediately short-staffed. We have the capacity to develop projects and we don't have the engineering staff to develop projects, so we have to contract with people to do that, at this point. Program-wise, we should have a conversation about our engineering capacity, but I think we should let our new engineer lead us through that conversation.
Great.
Do we just go to general budget conversation?
I think so, it sounds like here's the law.
I guess I got one more question with the bonding. This is, you know, example how it works. Have we assessed, I guess staff would do this, you know, what we really need to do in, in this, you know, what adjustment would that be made to this in our bonding capacity and what we would do? So, is that sort of, you know, in, somewhere in the ballpark, or?
Well, the numbers that are represented here are estimates shot in, or basically I gave, I gave Ellers a range.
Yeah.
For the highway facility, for the law enforcement facility, and they picked the middle of the range for each of those.
Okay, so, the assumptions are those three?
The, the assumptions are related to highway facility, the law enforcement facility, we may decide that we're not going to spend that much money on facilities and we'll spend significantly more on roads. That's completely wide open. Again, this calculator simply shows capacity.
Yeah.
And it shows the impact of.
I just want to make sure that this reflects some kind of base of range of reality on our basic budgeting.
Realistically, I think it, it shows that we can meet our long-term needs on long-term facilities and, and cover those expenses in less time than the life expectancy of those But this year's list, up for capital improvement bonding, is a summary of the things that we've been saying no to for the last three or four years, and Brian and Diane are very familiar with the list of things we've been saying no to.
More than three or four years.
I've only been, I've only been here through three budget cycles, so, it's probably significant. And, and in all honesty, Brian and Diane have both done a wonderful job of saying, of getting by with no, but I will tell you, it's more expensive to get by with no than it is to say yes at the right time.
Exactly.
And the conversation about community center, do we, do we need to bring it up to speed? Do we need to just make, you know, it's a 25-year-old building, that type of building, right? We need some investment at this point in time. What's the appropriate level of investment? Well, we're going to be bringing that to Herb, to Diane's board and to this board, and we're going to be making a recommendation, we think we should add this number to this year's capital bond so that we can take care of that. But we'll have that list, and we'll have that level of detail. We have talked about the possibility and the timing of doing that, you know, even having that public hearing on the 19th, and honestly, I just don't have the stomach to do that public hearing the same day that we're setting a preliminary levy. So, I think we just push that into October, that we come up with our number and we, we come up with our project list and we say, set a resolution that the board intends to authorize debt for these purposes of this list of items sometime in October, and hopefully we still fund in December, if we don't fund until, we're still going to be okay. So all of, the, the first round of debt issuance, we've generally had a conversation about what that, what's on that list. You all will get a very specific list before we ask you to authorize a resolution saying we're going to issue debt so that we can take care of some of these long, long-term needs.
Have we ever looked into the capital of funding and, and what the number would be for the courthouse, the roof and the windows, is any?
That's on that list.
That is on this list, so, that would be, page, listed here is page seven, if you look down on line 33, that's where we titled the 1718 courthouse improvements.
It's only really? I don't know that you can call them improvements, they're.
Necessities.
Yeah.
But that, those, those numbers are in there?
They, they flow through the document, you can see on line 19, line 18, rather, that 175,900 amount is the projected or the proposed debt service payment for the bonding that would take place. the proposed debt service payment for the bonding that would take place in, in late 17 or late 18.
So we would have a budget then to work with for capital outlay?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, exactly.
And on that list, remember were some of Brian's priorities, some of the community center's priorities. The east and west end highway facilities are still on that list, and I think they're represented on a different page because they hit a different fund. So that, that's on there, and those are working, and as if, and as we authorize a list that's different than this, then we'll update those assumptions and we'll, we'll track those changes and what, what happens to that.
Well, and I think we're looking at the law enforcement to come up with a plan there because if we can save money, we need to look at that versus what we're already spending on that.
And that's, and that's shown in 2022 on page seven. And that's a representation. Of course, if we go through our study over the next several months and we come up with a greater need or a better cost, cost benefit than we anticipate, we have the ability to move that forward in schedule. It's a shot in the dark on a number. It's the midpoint of a range that I gave them. So the range, and I basically said the range is a coat of paint to a brand-new criminal justice center. And who, somebody down in southern Minnesota just authorized a $24 million criminal justice center. Aiken County just issued $10 million worth of debt to redo their courthouse. Everybody's got aging infrastructure and capital, the same, the same issues as we do. So planning is just, it's really, really important.
And being ready to take advantage of opportunities when they come along. When you have a plan, you can take advantage of interest rates.
Informally, at one point, Mayor Jay asked me, he said, what, what, what does the county got for a building fund? And I told him. And he said, what have you done with low investment in, in interest rates in way of taking care of your capital infrastructure? And I said, absolutely nothing. And, and he said, as a taxpayer, I find that ridiculous.
Exactly.
That is, that because right now is the time that we should be doing it.
Responsible.
And we don't know what's going to happen in, between now and 2022. Maybe nothing.
I think that's a really important point, Jeff, and we talked about this, is that the, the lack of planning, of having a plan in place for this county on a widespread basis in the past is what's put us where we are right now.
If we don't know what we don't know, then we can't take advantage of these opportunities.
And we're all seeing that right now, and I don't think that the general public really understands that or the importance of that plan, of having a plan. I don't know if that message has quite gotten out there yet.
Well, so September 11, we're going to have both Chris and Bruce here for an hour to do a public meeting and town hall just on this plan. And I think one of the things that we want to make sure that we do really, really well is just, is just make the point, this is illustrative only. This is not a conversation about the budget. This tool is a planning tool so that we can test assumptions. And some of the assumptions, we can throw them up there, but we're not evaluating the assumptions. We're just demonstrating how the tool works and how it demonstrates its capacity and how different things can, can show that. We certainly want to put up there, the reason we're doing this is we know we have some significant capital needs, and they're related to our highway facilities, and they're related to our law enforcement facilities, and they're related to our main facilities. And I think we have the summary data on our square footage and the number of buildings we have now?
Oh, we do.
We should have that available so people understand the full context of what we're responsible for. And, and that hour, we want to contain that to an hour because right after that, then we're going to have our town hall meeting for the city of Grand Marie in the same room, where we're just going to take a five-minute break, come back, and then say, okay, now we're talking about our operating budget for 2018. So this is just, it, it's, it's our ability to demonstrate that we can do things without having a significant impact, but we also can show that if we don't plan now, we don't have that same capacity in the near term.
Doesn't magically just appear, but it does magically disappear.
It's 1.3 million for garage improvements. What exactly is that?
What?
This 1.3 million, is that in this year's budget?
It's not in the budget. It's in the proposed list for the bonding, which we haven't discussed yet. Which, which page are you looking at?
Page 33.
Okay, that's. That's, that's the east end and the west end and the south end.
West end, east end.
Now, because I just priced out 6,000 square foot building from Martin Building, $375,000, brand new.
Well, then we contract with you guys and you can do it for a quarter.
These are simply budget figures.
I understand, they're just.
You put numbers like that, that's, people get a little scared.
It's better than what we've been doing in the past, which is putting a number that's way too low.
The last shop that I built was, goes a 7,200 square foot facility and it costs $650,000, so $100 a foot is.
Yeah, I just.
We, we have to go through the whole process of engineering and design and, and have, and go through a bid process for that, but we have to have a budget number, we have to have a number in the budget.
Yeah, because that's $550,000 over.
But that doesn't include, it's not just the building, it's the fueling station, it's salt sand storage building. And I'm not saying that these numbers are what we should go by, but it gives us an idea where to start. I brought that up when I talked to Jeff about these figures that we got from one company. They said, they may be up there a little higher than what we can actually get for a price. So we will look at that when it comes. So this is just guesswork.
It's a placeholder for, to make the assumptions so we can put together this extremely complicated plan and make good decisions. And then it's better when it comes right down to it.
The process related to debt issuance is the same. At some point, we're going to ask the county board about the resident resolution to issue debt not to exceed this number for this list of priorities using these different vehicles of financing. And then over the course of the next couple of months, we're going to refine those assumptions, we're going to get bids in, we're going to get that in, and we're going to say, okay, we thought we needed $7.2 million to accommodate the transportation projects and all of our, and all of our other projects, and we only need 6.8. Okay, that's, that's an easy, but again, in that same situation, you can't go ask for more than the initial authorizing resolution. That's just part of that process. And we haven't asked for any of that yet.
Right.
We're just showing, we're just showing what the impact would be. And the impact is fairly negligible because we have very low debt right now.
So we're in a good place. There are opportunities. We have strong needs. This is a good, it's a good plan. Starting to build a good plan. And being responsible. Okay. Five break?
Should we take five and come back and start talking about 2018 assumptions?
Yes, that sounds great. Excellent. Back to five. Okay. Okay. Cameras left running.
Pointed it this way.
Said that well.
Yep.
But I do appear to desire some improvements to the soup.
Jeff, first glance, does this, does this model show what you want?
This file shows exactly what I think that Google has to show. And it shows significant capacity.
Right.
Shows that all of the assumptions are completely audited and change or view or modify. I think that we're showing buying grounds of future debt.
Yep. Well, yep. Yeah, and that's something too, that as each year progresses and you have a better idea of what the cash you have available, you could buy now.
Lots of different things you can do.
But always be careful. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it was, you know, kind of said in, in different ways today, but with, with this approach, you can address a structural deficit while also taking on some major capital needs. And once you get to 2021.
Right.
Your levy is doing exactly what inflation is doing.
Yep.
So you, so now you're right, now you've addressed your main capital needs.
I still wonder if we really won. Simply, we're still not going to be 50% of our revenue by the time this is over. I think our 30% is going after that.
Sure.
This shows otherwise, but it's assuming.
The fire pole was.
Right, right, and this is a million.
Health insurance, it's to your own value.
But nobody talks about the wage.
2% of our.
Yeah, that's big.
This is a big chunk of our expenditures.
Yep.
And that's not going to restrain the 3%.
Yep.
And so that assumption that we're going to have to revise a couple of years.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, I mean, some parts of some companies.
Right. Yeah, yeah, especially, right, especially where health, healthcare is such a large percentage of your overall.
They are, that's true.
It's okay if I stick around for this?
You are absolutely.
It's okay, we're, we're going to be done by 2:30 or 3:30. One way or another. I'm, you know, I'm actually staying, my dad's coming up and we're going to do some hiking tomorrow, so I've got, I've got all this.
You've got a actually beautiful thing to.
Yeah, I think so.
Last night, there were seven of us from the master swim pool that jumped off of Artist Point and swam to the best western.
How did that go?
It was, it was beautiful.
Yeah.
The water was 65 degrees.
It's a little brisk.
No, 65 with a white suit is really warm.
With a wet suit, yeah.
Oh, really?
It's relatively warm. Do you want to read it, Molly?
What?
Do you want to read Megan Carroll Burger's response to my response to their request for that? It is correct, I have no interest in meeting with you. Then I got one response on.
Oh, look, I just sent you a email. That's on the debt policy stuff. I had to go grab the power cord that was here. Machine.
As the, this, this newspaper that I'm getting proposed increases.
You know, our former commissioner who is reading as authority for newspapers.
Okay.
Basically taking shots of me saying, or it's the weak-minded fools who don't know how to answer the wrong questions and can't do their own thinking, following the directions of the newspaper. I didn't know I had such power. I thought you guys were fairly well-versed and understood, understood the role. So, and, and I, and that's of course coming cheek, you guys all know exactly, you, you have specifically said yes to a request that makes sense. And now we have to take a look at, what are we going to do to balance the budget that worked?
Yeah, as far as I'm concerned, we're working to ease the load a little bit, it involves a budget. So, you know.
I am. Thank you for that. I am who I am. That's not, that's not good, that's not good.
But, you know, I think we, that, that's a strong indication that we're trying to do it in a logical way.
I'm fully aware of that. I recommend embracing my own taxes.
I'm way too old. I mean, they're ridiculous. I've got two grand.
I paid $1,000 last year in county taxes.
Yeah, so you have a median value.
I, I have the median.
You paid with a renter counter that you're showing, yeah.
Oh, my lake properties is way, way up there.
Sure.
So what do you think, Brady?
Can you fight her?
Yeah, one-third.
In here?
Yeah. You know, for real, you have a median value of all part-time to the balance because he's, he's way up there.
You know fighters.
And that, that was that a couple of times earlier. That's, that's the challenge.
No, no.
You know, that's, that's primarily what it's.
You can use the same.
We can use the same tool.
Taxation issue is not necessarily.
Yeah, well.
And I look at.
Because what, you know, what can you do is we change and one of him.
Sure.
What's the budget? Nothing.
It is what it is.
Yeah, I think it's going to, I think.
Is it new-ish?
Huh?
Coffee, is it new-ish?
It's new, warm.
Take a ladder and people want to knock me.
Is there any coffee in that rating?
It was.
Oh. It was. Oh, there it is. Is it there?
Yes.
That's Brady driving a V.
And he wasn't, he was almost not good.
You have one of these, sorry. Do you want half of this, Fred?
No, I'm good.
It's a general, it's a general test.
Always. You're the public guy, every day is a test. How you present yourself.
If we're all high above valuation.
They will see a change.
They're going to see the.
Right, and I can't tell them how much that's going to be yet because we haven't done the whole stuff, but we're working.
Anything to tell them that they are, they're the section that's doing this work.
And when I was up there on the 15th of July and, and, you know, when we talked before that, the association, I told them, a lot of you, but there was, there was 20, 50 people. So, you know, I'm guessing we're going to get to some of the same people that are involved.
Others on the statement.
Yeah, we did talk about, I just figured maybe he was going to need a little extra support.
Because, so like here. Yes.
And if you, if you would like me to end the meetings, I will. If you feel it's necessary that it would help the process.
Yeah.
You got these Taj.
Okay, never mind. Okay.
I think it's fancy new windows. I mean, can't we just.
But I bet I was looking at that total and my total.
All the people. All the West Ages.
There's that window plastic that you.
Yeah. It's comfy. I wanted to see her, look at that car. Yeah, it's comfy.
We actually don't. It's a shed. It's a conversation. You know, you know what that was? That was probably wasn't overall that well. It was using a topia or an engine shed. Used to be a lead shade generator machine shed for the landfill. It was the, the lead shade and stuff like that.
Yay. Are we ready to resume? Are we ready to resume? Let's go building two. Right.
Ready, Chris?
Yeah. Okay, project 2018. Here we go. This is the sheet of summaries. Great, so we've all received this black and white summary. Which is awesome.
What that shows is the 14, look in the bottom right-hand corner, it shows a 14.9%. Could I get one, please?
I can see it. Great, here we go.
Okay, now. And that's with the proposed levy of $9,035,675. And it shows all of our, our actual departmental budgets and with some changes already since you last saw this. And with a $470,000 yet to go to get to 14.9%. Some of the changes Jeff had asked department heads to come forward, and this reflects 80,000 reduction each for Human Services and Highway Department. It reflects a reduction in Jeff's budget, 23,000 for Professional Services and Staff It reflects an increase in the 2017 CIP bonds to match what's going on in this financial management plan that we saw. So those are the big changes that are already in here. I think there's a, there's a few others. So then we still have to deal with that 470,000 to get to 14.9%.
And, aren't you going to tell us where that is?
Well, some of, some of the options. The board talked about reducing the discretionary requests to 2% of the 2017 levy. That would be 63,000 roughly, about 64,000 reduction if you took that step. If you could forego the increase in fund balance, you've got 100,000 in there. We've got some very good news on health insurance. The committee met and our actuarial numbers came back better than expected, plus the committee recommended adjustments beyond that, and we're looking at 5.1% instead of, we've been budgeting 15 initially and we threw in enough to be 20 based on what we were hearing out there. So.
That's only five, just 5.1s.
Can we lock that in? Before they watch the video? Getting the 10 years premium and advance.
So what is that amount?
About $270,000.
In savings?
From what. Is that reflected in this?
Nope.
Wow.
That's why we're talking about now.
So we had a 19.1% last year and they bought that, being in the co-op, brought it down from what, 24 to 19?
27 to 19.
27 to 19. So we were, but it's real, it's cautionary because 27 last year, 5 this year.
Right.
And the city was at, what, 5.9 last year?
Last year the city had 5.7 and this year they're, they're going to get 29.
29. So this could easily jump right back.
This is, this is market stuff that's just, they're looking at their year-end numbers saying, what do we need to increase depending upon the.
Well, this is market and it's actuarial. And we took our actuarial hit last year and our usage has stayed at that level. Again, remember, every time we're talking about health insurance usage, we're talking about the people we work with. So when we talk about, the suggestion was made that we go out and we shop, we went out and we shopped and we don't have anybody willing to give us a quote because we're old and unhealthy.
And some of us are collectors.
And we don't, well, I mean, that's, we're, we're not a good risk. Our group is not a good risk. We are geographically remote. We don't have all the options everybody has to choose from to start with. Those two things combined means our membership in a larger pooling agency has helped us significantly over the years. The fact that we ought to be having conversations with our staff about participation wages versus benefits, we're having that conversation. That conversation is being had. The number this year is good, but it's cautionary. Judy last week got a summary of our region and the state and the public employers and what their, what kind of health plans they have and what kind of expenses they have. We are below the median. I know our health insurance costs are high, but they're lower than the average cost for public employers. Our plan is very similar in design to what other public employers give. So the context around health insurance is, don't panic. It's significant. It's out of our control, but we're doing everything we can to mitigate those costs. And this year we got a good number.
What else you have, Brady? Well, that's great. Let's just see. Yeah.
We could bond for some of the highway equipment that's in the budget. If we go ahead with this CIP bond, we could do an equipment bond which would just be, they would do it at the same time. So it would save on administrative costs or just be two different types of bonding. So that's, it makes more sense to do the equipment that isn't financed already, that gets complicated. There may be penalties, things like that for paying those off. So it makes more sense, there's 300,000 of new equipment, so we could potentially bond for that. Valerie, departments responded to the request. What can you find Valerie said they can do without EMS vehicle next year, that's 8,000. Pat responded, the K9 unit is new, if we had to cut back, that's an obvious possibility, that's 19,950. Just those right there add up to about 761,000. The other revenue source, we're, we're hoping, Todd is still working on the reappraisal of our pilt lands. And we think conservatively, we might get 80, 85,000 additional. We lost about 100 from the year before, initial war rounds, so in this reappraisal, we might get some of that back before the end of the year. Couldn't count on it now, but that's possible.
And that's complicated. Because they asked us for the real numbers and we gave them to them, they didn't like it.
Oh.
So.
They just like the public.
Well, it's a DNR thing and I had Kyle doing the whole project to try to figure out exactly how much pilt land we had and he came up with 6,000 acres more than what the DNR sees that we have. And he said, no, you can't classify it that way because everybody looks at land differently. And we said, okay. So I said, well, then we'll use what you have in place. They didn't like that, that number. So I don't know where that number came from that they gave us initially, we're, we're trying to fix it, so.
But still looks like 80,000 more.
Well, right now, potentially, yeah, I don't know for sure.
We can count on it. But I would be more comfortable reducing the 100,000 into the fund balance if we agree that if we actually get that 80, it goes into the fund balance. I'd be willing to take that gamble. Because we're not counting on it.
The good news is, is we have options.
Yes.
The cautionary news is, right now it looks like we have options we could reduce even lower than our projected projection, but if we do, then we don't see getting to 3% or 4% after three years because that's 3% or 4% of a number that we've gotten to from 18, 19, 20. If we don't ramp up to a significant, to that number in our levy by 2020, then we're not down to 3% or 4%.
So it's not really about percentage, it's about a number.
It's, it's, it's not even really about a number, it's just, it's about having an operational budget that fully supports what we're doing and not, and, and we should, when we see opportunities, so we shouldn't finance the equipment if we don't have to. We should pay cash for it because we have the capacity to do that. Financing a vehicle that we're going to use for seven or eight or nine years over a 15-year bond is a bad idea. Nobody wants to make payments on a car that they're not driving anymore. It's a possibility. But, so when I had a conversation with Yafa and the Human Service Supervisors yesterday, we talked, they came, everybody, everybody came up with a list and they said, we can give this much. You know, it's people showing up and say, well, I can give two, two pints of blood. No, you can't. And I'm only going to get, let you change the assumptions that don't change the level of service we can provide. So when Yafa came up with some numbers, I said, that's great, but I'm not going to let you put those on the table until the board comes and says, actually, we have to change the game completely again. If we're going to play, if we're playing the same game that we started out playing, that we're going to balance the budget, then let's balance the budget around the level of services that we currently have. The savings from the Highway Department come from, we've, we're still, we've been estimating our fuel at the high fuel costs that we experienced several years ago. And we've been underspending in that budget line for the last couple of years. So we made an adjustment to that. Now, you all know what happened down in Texas the last couple of days and you saw what happened at the gas pumps this morning. I don't know that we should accept that offer to, to lower the fuel prices for this year. I think we ought to really test that and make sure that, that we're not budgeting ourselves into a corner related to fuel. The other 80, the other part of the 80,000 that the Highway gave us, they said, you know, crack ceiling and striping, we can defer a couple of those things until we get a pavement management plan in place and we don't have to budget as much for 2018 for those two things. And I think everybody could agree that that's not necessarily going to impact the safety of our roads if we put that together with the plan. So that's what the 80,000 in Highway was. The majority of the, of 54,000 of the Health and Human Services Trump was a revision of our expectations of out-of-home placements. And we just reviewed our, this year's case history and, and again, a $54,000 change in what we're planning to budget for, for out-of-home placements mean we're not talking 500,000, we're talking 450. So it's still a big number. It's still a number that could exceed our expectation, but it's a number that Yafa and Grace were comfortable in saying, I think we can, I think we can reduce this a little bit. So the most significant portion of that is, is of the 80,000 that Health and Human Service offered was in the out-of-home placement allocation. And then there were some other allocation changes and some different programmings and some things that we potentially have grant funding for that we don't need to fund out of levy and that made up the difference there. So we have opportunities to get, to meet that mark. We have opportunities to meet that mark and we still haven't, you know, we, the budget represents a halftime FTE to phase in the systems administrator to replace somebody that we anticipate retiring. It's a good, solid plan. It costs money to do that, but it's a good plan so that we transition on with, with the same level of service we've come to expect. The other assumption that's in there is that we are going to say a full-time veteran service officer is important to us. And when we look at the caseload that our veteran service officer takes care of in both of her functions right now, we've got this balloon of people who meet the needs and are, and are requiring needs of her services. And we're showing one more FTE to provide for those people in our community next year in the 2018 budget. We haven't specifically said yes, but we've heard that need, we've heard that presentation, we've heard those assumptions. With the, with the cost savings that we show here, we can say yes to that. The cautionary thing is that that becomes part of our operational budget. Every time we say yes to a program, it becomes part of our operating budget. You look at the population figures and that population is peaking, but it's going to stay there for a number of years. If that changes significantly, we can revise our staff level accordingly. I think it's a, I think it's an appropriate thing for us to consider.
Yeah, I'd like to speak to that. I, I really think that we need to take care of that. That's high priority in my mind that we don't quibble about that one in the light of these other numbers. That's the right thing to do and no matter what our budget situation is.
So the fact is, is we can meet that target easily without changing the level of service that we provide. I think we can do a really good job of explaining to the public at these town hall meetings what they're getting for their tax dollar. It's, it's analogous to paying insurance. I don't like paying insurance, I pay insurance because I have to. Hopefully, I never actually have to make a claim, but if I do, I hope it works. And our services, aside from, you know, I hope nobody has to, has to have an encounter with our law enforcement or is a victim of a crime that requires our law enforcement intervention. But if they do, I hope we take care of them. Same with Health and Human Services. It's really easy to show everybody the cost benefit of, of having well-maintained roads.
There's, there's another issue too, that there's been some legislative changes in regards to disabled veterans this last year. And now that's going to affect Pat's workload somewhat, possibly not, not a lot, but we're working with her on that now so that we can make sure that it's being handled properly. So this was just a recent legislative change, so.
I got a question. How should we proceed with this scenario? We've got numbers.
So the fact is, is we can meet that target easily without changing the level of service that we provide. I think we can do a really good job of explaining to the public at these town hall meetings what they're getting for their tax dollar. It's, it's analogous to paying insurance. I don't like paying insurance, I pay insurance because I have to. Hopefully, I never actually have to make a claim, but if I do, I hope it works. And our services, aside from, you know, I hope nobody has to, has to have an encounter with our law enforcement or is a victim of a crime that requires our law enforcement intervention, but if they do, I hope we take care of them. Same with Health and Human Services. It's really easy to show everybody the cost benefit of, of having well-maintained roads.
There's, there's another issue too, that there's been some legislative changes in regards to disabled veterans this last year, and now that's going to affect Pat's workload somewhat, possibly not, not a lot, but we're working with her on that now so that we can make sure that it's being handled properly. So this was just a recent legislative change, so.
I got a question. How should we proceed with this scenario? We've got numbers. Well, I, I just spoke for, you know, the veteran service officer. People agree with that, or how should we process this?
So I'm going to talk through the town hall meetings and what I anticipate they might look like and what we might bring to those. Commissioners, I gave you a copy of an email that Commissioner Story sent me a couple of days ago, and it's, it's the general questions that we get from the public. Use the fund balance, it is the taxpayers' money. It's an option. I think we've discussed that it's not an option that staff would recommend that we, that we do, and we have solid reasons for it, which we've discussed. Eliminate combined reduced positions, eliminate your administrator position, cut hours, reduce to four days. I think we could demonstrate, we could do any of those things. We can. If we cut hours and reduce to four days, I think most of our staff will be looking for other jobs, and nobody will be providing those services. It certainly wouldn't demonstrate a commitment to the staff that we have, and I think that's important for us to say, that we're committed to the staff we have because we know we can't do the work we need to do without them.
The note I put next to number four, it doesn't change the need.
It doesn't change the need.
We already have requests that exceed what our staff can meet, and so how does that make sense to reduce the number of staff and the hours that they work if they already can't need the load? I don't, I don't want to get it.
So our plan in reviewing this list, I went through this with Valerie, was to come up with an FAQ page, and we're going to answer in a general way what we think the response is to these general questions. But more importantly, I need the commissioners to feel like they can adequately address these questions or ask questions if they don't feel they can, or if they don't, aren't supportive of, then we need to know that too. They can, individually, you can all respond to these however you need to. But from a staff perspective, we can tell you what we think we've been charged to do and what it's going to take to provide those services, and, and those questions are, they're the, they're the generic questions, they make sense. Hopefully, we can provide context so people understand, but, and if we're directed to do something different, we'll do something different. The YMCA, I know we go round and round on that, I can do an FAQ, we can give the information. I think it's fair enough to say that we spend the same amount of money on the YMCA between the city and the county than we did, used to spend on the pool, and I think that really should be the end of the conversation because we see the YMCA as significantly adding to the culture of this community. And I know it doesn't serve everybody the same, but we were down, I was down swimming yesterday in the East Bay, and there was a couple there going, what are you guys doing? And we're putting on our wetsuits and getting ready to go swimming. They said, we had a master's program and we swam at the Y, and they said, in Duluth? I said, no, we have one here in town. And they're like, how can you possibly have a Y in town? And remember, the Y is in town because there was a motor authorized referendum. So for people to say it wasn't authorized by the people, that's incorrect. It wasn't authorized, it wasn't unanimous, of course, but it did go through a process, and it was a public expenditure. No outside consulting and services, well, we can't run our, our engineering department without it, and in all honesty, we don't have time on our desks to do the things that we've asked Chris and Bruce to do for us like this. I could, but I couldn't respond to public requests, I couldn't spend any time with my staff.
I have a feeling that if we removed any of these things, they would be asking for those things every year.
So we're going to do an FAQ on our website. So there's a new website right now, it's Cook, the generic website slash budget.
Yeah, CO.Cook.MN.us/budget. Takes you to a page, just changing every day with budget information on it.
And we just absorbed that with the staff that we currently have, and you just put more on your plate. Thanks, Rena.
Rena, Rena. I largely did that herself because she was, she had staff on vacation, I'm going to be honest. Basically, everything that is in your budget book as commissioners will be available on that page. And I don't want to put, the last thing that's not up there is the sixty-five page level of detail that I want to put up there, but I don't want to put up there until we have an opportunity to make the changes after the next couple of days worth of meetings. So all of that information will be available. There's a button on there that says, ask a question. And the question, it generates a mail to link, and it generates a mail to myself and Brady and Valerie, and we'll respond to those, and we'll add them to the FAQ that we'll put on the website. And hopefully, what we do is, we get people to the point that they can ask for specific information. If they have specific questions about program, we want to give them specific answers. But when somebody's question is, I don't want to pay higher taxes, I don't know how to respond to that.
It's not a question.
So those assumptions are, this is last year's truth and taxation presentation that we had. I asked Valerie to start on this year's materials that we'll bring to the town hall meetings, and we'll walk through them. So I anticipated these town hall meetings, we're going to start with the commissioners hosting the meeting and offering a few minutes of introduction, or however they want to field that, that then we would have copies of this available, and that staff would give a presentation, ten to fifteen minute presentation of our budget proposal for the year and the assumptions that are in that budget proposal. And then we would open it up to questions and answers, and I'm assuming that the commissioner will want to facilitate that question and answer period in each of their meetings.
Why, who's going to introduce you and then leave us?
Do that too? So, and, and this is a work in progress, I've, I've made some, I've made some notes on mine, I guess it's in my paper copy, not in this electronic copy. So an overview, the county's financial position, the draft budget assumptions, the board goals, talking about the values of the policy, the budget policy that we're talking about, solutions, key dates and next steps, and then open it to questions. So very simply, you know, an overview, setting the budget is the most important program that the commissioners are responsible for because it gives the direction to the rest of the staff. The current financial position, the county's been rolling at, an increase for the last five years. We've been buying it with levy, we've been deferring payments, we've been doing everything we can, and that rain keeps coming down the tunnel. So we're facing the same problem we have. And this third bullet points is based on the estimated budget forecast, the county requires an additional three point two, it's three point five to three point seven, unless we change some assumptions. If, if we assume that we really can get by without putting a hundred thousand dollars a year into the fund balance, or we can reduce our money back into the piggy bank for the couple of years until we start doing that, then, then three point two to three point five is accurate. And the question was asked on the radio on, on Thursday, so if we bang the gavel and we say yes to fifteen, fourteen, thirteen, is that it for three years? Absolutely not. It's an annual process. If we get new information and we can make adjustments, we can. If something dramatic happens and we lose our pilt funding, we're going to have to react, right? I mean, there's all kinds of things. Budgeting is an annual process. Forecasting and planning is a continual process and needs to look out beyond that one-year So the board goals, help address the unbalanced budget gap, spread this out over the next three years, leverage funds so that we don't have to rely solely on levy, long-term financial plans that account for asset renewal and infrastructure.
And I'm assuming that this presentation is on that website?
It will be.
It will be, that's fantastic.
This presentation, and it's, and I'll, and I'll ask you the question, we were having this today, I'll be as diagrammed and transparent as we can. So every time we revise this page, my plan was, I mean, Brady's got all the, he's got all the documentation, he's got all the records of how this stuff changed, but that, that budget 2018 is going to reflect the current information. So as we change something, we'll replace the information with the newer information. So if we're modifying this presentation as we walk through the process, as we should, because we'll be refining finance goals and numbers and dealing with all those things, the current copy will be on the website. And well, if somebody wants an old archive copy, then they can certainly ask for that. But it becomes very difficult to try to have all that stuff available at the same time. And I think working with the current information would be the best thing to represent. And then here's a, here's the one-page summary, and it says, as of eight fourteen, and this one says, as of eight twenty-nine, so you see how much it's changed. If you think of things that you think should be in here, we can put them in here. If we've got context and notes, and we've got our books behind the scenes, so if people ask specific questions, we can. We want this to be a high-level, understandable presentation, and we want to have all of our details so we can answer specific questions. And again, everybody's going to have access to all of the detail on the webpage. And here's, here's a chart that I saw for the first time last year, as Brady's been tracking, the gap between what we receive in CASA maintenance funds and what it actually takes to provide CASA maintenance. So generally, I could represent that three point seven million dollar shortfall over the next three years as being taken up by two things. The additional staff we've specifically added to Health and Human Services and the gap in CASA funding. Those two things are about one point three million dollars a year. And although state and federal funding hasn't fallen off, it hasn't kept pace specifically, and as Brady mentioned on Thursday, it's become much more targeted and specific. We get a lot less general state and federal fund that we can just use for anything, and a lot more targeted and specific funding that we have to use for specific purposes. And that's one of the, this, this is representative of that.
And that's a specific purpose amount that's fallen.
That's, that's one specific purpose amount that's fallen.
It's the gas tax that doesn't keep up anymore.
And then a breakdown of the 2017 ten-year average revenues, so, so a ten-year average of revenue sources, we've got to clean this up, I don't know what information is better to see, this, the current year, the proposed year, a ten-year average. Because we have so much pass-through money and grant money, and it changes, it's really hard to represent the ups and downs in the actual budget without accounting for them one way or another. But the revenue sources show that on a ten-year average, our, our levy is twenty-nine percent of our revenues. Operating grants and contributions are thirty-two percent. We have another, we have another one that breaks it down and says, county levy, county other sources, state and federal sources, and I think that might even be more descriptive than breaking it down into the types of funding, coming from the source of the funding rather than the type. Breakdown of expenditures, we can talk about our primary departments. The Highway in the 2018 proposed, because we've got an infusion of transportation sales tax projects, is almost fifty percent of the proposed expenditures. It's five million dollars more than it was in 2017, but that's all pass-through money related to that new source of funding. So it's hard to, there's a big asterisk next to that one saying. But our operating budget has actually gone down again from 2017 to 2018, but some changes in pass-through monies make it look like it's gone significantly up. We can also break down our expenditures into wages and benefits and other. I don't know what is the most useful. Do we show all of them? Do we show by program, or do we show by type of expense?
It gets really complicated.
Yeah.
We can talk to both of them, and, like I said, we'll be revising this as we walk through these town hall meetings. And then here's, here are the solutions, if we're solving for three point seven, here's the three options to get us there. A single year, thirty percent. Twenty thirteen and nine, and again, once you set your assumptions, everything in the middle is a calculation because we've got contracts, and we've got agreements, and we've got reimbursement rates and programs, and, and everything is really formula-related. It's a lot like the work that Todd does, you put a valuation on a property, and then you take all the properties and all the valuations in the county, and you give it to the state, and you give them a number, and they crank it out, and then it tells you what portion of that taxpayer each person pays. The calculation, we can't adjust the calculations because that just happened. We have to talk about the assumptions if we don't like the end results. And here, we put, with any of these plans, Cook County would expect five to seven percent as a new normal, and, and shouldn't be facing double-digit increases in the future. Chris was representing three to four percent as a new normal, and the hedge that I have on there is our, our expenditure on health benefits, which we're negotiating, we're working on, is ten percent of our expenditure budget. When that much of your budget is out of your control, it's really hard to forecast for a three percent expenditure increase, when ten percent is subject to speaking significantly So I'm cautious about that three to four percent. When we're compared to other counties who are showing a three to four percent increase, I will quickly point out that their tax rate is higher than ours, and their, their revenue source, levy as a revenue source is, is at fifty or greater than fifty percent of their total revenues. When you already have control over that much of your revenue source, it's much easier to mitigate those expenses. A change from federal funding or state funding doesn't affect so much of your budget. Seventy percent of our budget is coming from outside sources that may be beyond our control, and ten percent of our expenditures are unpredictable at best until some major change in, in the county's, or the country's health plan. We kind of have to hedge our bet on that one. The next steps and key dates, a listing of the meetings, a media release went out yesterday with all the, because we actually nailed down all of the locations for the meetings. And again, I think our plan on September eleventh would be to start at six and try to limit it to fifty, fifty-five minutes and take a break and come back at seven so that we have a clear distinction between the purposes of the meetings. I was just reading in the Minnesota County's weekly update, Shisago County set their preliminary levy last week, or this week, they're like a month ahead of schedule.
What did they set it at?
Three and a half percent increase. Thirty-four million dollars of a sixty-seven million dollar operating budget. Again, their, their support to revenue.
We had thirty-four million dollars.
Shisago County?
Shisago County. And it was a great story because their administrator is a friend of mine who were classmates back in undergrad, he's a mentor of mine now, and the story says, essentially, he gave the budget to an intern, and they, and she walked their commissioners through the process. She could just give him full credit for the work that he did this year.
Shisago County is one of the higher taxed counties in the metro.
It is.
Yes.
Shisago has one of the highest tax rates in the state.
Yep.
Next to Carver.
I have my folks with Carver.
But, but in all honesty, I can go look at other indicators, I can go look at the public health rankings of the counties within the state, and from 2016 to 2017, we slipped from seventy-eight to seventy-nine out of eighty-seven. Our health outcomes are lousy. Shisago County is in the top third. There's, there's an indicator that represents how we're taking care of our people. So anyway, the rest of the dates, taxation notices, the truth and taxation period, we'll set that truth and taxation date at the date that we set our preliminary levy. November thirtieth and November twenty-ninth being the deadline to submit a final levy request. And then here's the, here's the piece where you can get more information, stay engaged, here's the new website, submit questions, we'll keep an updated FAQ, attending public meetings, and the truth and taxation meeting period to be set within that timeframe. And then we'll just open it up to questions. I, I hope we run through the presentation in ten or fifteen minutes so that we give it the most time that we possibly can to the feedback that the people were asking for. This is the opportunity for them to ask those questions. And I think I see us standardizing a spring town hall meeting relating to valuation and a fall town hall meeting relating to budget as supplementing the required hearings that we have related to valuation and budget. I think that'd just be a great practice to set.
An encouraging conversation at this meeting. An encouraging conversation at this meeting, so that people don't feel like they're, because people are being heard, but they don't feel like they're being heard because there's no response. Which is sort of where we want the, like, Truth in Taxation is really about a hearing. It's not really about a conversation.
It really is. It's really just listening. And it becomes messy when it gets to becoming a debate.
Exactly.
Heidi made a great comment on the radio last week about the Truth in Taxation meeting that really, it's unrealistic for people to come to that meeting that they've been a process and expect that we're going to satisfy everybody's requests. Because not all requests are reasonable. Not all requests are within our realm of options.
It's too late in the process, so we don't have time to consider them.
So this conversation, and these conversations before we set the preliminary levy are much more timely.
And it's not that we don't have time to consider them. We have. That's the part I struggle with, is when these questions are asked of me, I feel like we have failed the public because we've asked these questions, we've done the homework, we don't take it lightly, and so where have we failed in our communication to the public that they think that all of us just sit here and say yes to everything, and don't question anything, and don't do any homework, and don't do any research? Where have I failed my residents in explaining things to them? Where have my residents gotten to the point where they think that I don't do anything?
We want to just have our system as good as humanly possible, so that we can take care of all of those needs that are ours, really, to feel like we've satisfied our need to communicate, our need to show people that we're being responsible, our need to put our best foots forward.
And we can't possibly satisfy everybody that's out there, but what we can do is, on a daily basis, try to help them understand this complicated process by holding public hearings and meetings, and inviting everybody to come, and hoping that people participate. And the only way that's gonna happen is through communication. We're never gonna be able to answer all the questions, but we need to have more questions.
That presentation was amazing.
It's especially amazing since Valerie did that sometime between 4:00 and 11:00 this morning.
That's impressive. So, try it out tomorrow night.
So one question that I, one reason that I asked department heads to attend this meeting is I wanted commissioners to kind of give us some idea of what they would like to see as staff commitment to these meetings. Brady, are you available or planning to attend?
Yeah.
Oh, that's good, that's good.
Start there. I'm, they're, all four are on my schedule.
Todd will be at mine.
Todd's gonna be at the first one. He said he'd be available. I said we could play that by ear. Pat, you asked about it, and I think it'd be great because you represent one of the significant budgets, but I know you've got other commitments as well.
I've got off one planned.
Have you?
Bobby, if you, if you would like me to come to home and then answer it.
And Jenny will be at my meeting tomorrow.
And to answer that question, these are all noticed public meetings, so if we have a quorum of commissioners there, that's not a problem.
That's good, actually. So I won't be at any of the meetings this week, but I'll be at the two in September.
So I guess I would just ask from one of the non-major budget departments, is what
is the expectation of the commissioners and administration? Should we all strive to be at every one of these, or not?
Well, I'll be the jerk and say that I have a really hard time asking any of you to be there because I already know how much you weigh. I know the public doesn't want to hear that, but...
Honestly, I would, if the commissioner really wants someone to be at one of the meetings, I would say ask that, but if we have myself, and Brady, and Pat, and Todd, we can reasonably respond to any of the questions related to any of the major budgets. And if people get into a specific question, we can write it down and come back to it.
It goes on the website.
And they'll go on the website. The public process that we're gonna go through related to the major questions for community center and buildings is gonna be a separate process. It's outside of the budget because we're talking about financing for it, so I don't know that I would need, I would ask either of you to be present, but I would make it available and say, "If you want to see what the process looks like, you certainly could." Yeah, fine, I don't...
You're my department head at the moment.
And in all honesty, I wouldn't ask you to be there because I don't want to get that deep into program costs. And I think I can answer questions related to the organization chart, and who's largely responsible for what types of services, and the way that we've got everything budgeted is as tight as we think we can get without intentionally under-budgeting, under-funding any one of our programs.
And, when I gave you my sheet that said, "Here are the cuts, and here's the increases," and I said, "This isn't gonna be exactly equal to the number," one of the reductions in the out-of-home placements cost, also reduction in that cost, also is a reduction in federal revenue based on those costs. And so, I...
So, to be fair, the $80,000 reduction in Health and Human Services is not actually 80, I think it's 67 something. Because there was a corresponding reduction in revenue as well. But for today's purposes, I didn't feel that we needed to break that up to the zeros because I know that we'll have a different copy of this tomorrow.
Right. And we also want to be careful not to be too complicated, and, like you said, too much detail, forest, the trees, forest, the trees.
You can't get to a certain level of detail until decisions have actually been made. Some we can, honestly, the numbers, Brady called his sources, I called my sources, and we looked at that health insurance number, and, "Is this really real?" Because, A, I'll tell you, I budgeted, I asked Brady to budget 15% because in June, I understood that the renewal rate for the school pool average, the median, was gonna be 15%, and that people were gonna see increases above or below that based on their usage. So I said 15% is the median, and then as we got a little closer on, I kept looking at our usage, and I said, "Our usage is still above the expected median. We need to hedge that bet a little bit," which is when you put that additional number in. Now, when we got the recommendation from the Service Cooperative Board, I found out that actually the city and county pool this year, average increase was only 9.6 instead of 15. So one of the assumptions we were using changed. And it's not that the pools weren't comparable, it's just that the assumptions changed between the pools this year. And then, the reason that ours is below average is just actuarial rounding. We took a big increase last year. And they covered their expenses, and probably rolled a little bit into this year that allowed us to buy down our net need for this year. So, it's a great number. It represents the ability to meet this target without sacrificing anything that we've got programmed on.
So what point do we discuss the items that Brady had provided and the implications of those? Do we do that on the 19th?
You know, in all honesty, the 12th is our next scheduled board meeting, and I fully intend that we would have that list developed, and that we would work towards a consensus on what we plan on doing on the 19th before then. And we'll give you a full laundry list of what you can amend you, and we'll make some recommendations on what we think we can do to get there.
Okay.
And in between, our doors are open, and we want you to understand the level of detail in these books. We're gonna be collecting the information from these town hall meetings through this process, so on the 12th, we're gonna dedicate, we'll have a, we'll probably have a lunch break in our board meeting on the 12th. Because then we need to sit down, and we need to make some pretty firm recommendations on where we're gonna go before we can set a levy on the 19th.
So the 12th meeting will be a longer meeting, and they'll be considering all the options that have been discussed today, plus there may be some more.
So we're gonna go into the afternoon on the 12th?
I would anticipate.
Okay, that's, that's good.
Which maybe we have to push back the first afternoon meeting, but that's...
Right?
Well, it's good news.
You know, having been through this process, I mean, we're not done, but huge improvement over the last two years, just in this process. So, and just in time-saving, and thoughtful, and intelligence, and so forth, this whole idea to eliminate or reduce the administrator position, it's like, we couldn't have, we certainly couldn't be here at this moment without an administrator, a very good one. And I would say there's a cost savings there, just in skin, and hide, and emotions, and feeling comfortable with the process, and with having our town meetings and so forth, and by having elders here twice a week's process, it just feels like a totally different community. Feels really good.
My goal is that commissioners all have all the context they need to make an educated vote when we come to voting on the budget. So if you don't feel that you have that, then let me know. I've got time on my schedule for that.
So does anybody have any more questions, concerns? No? Shall we adjourn?
Sure.
Adjourn. Great. Thank you, everyone. Good meeting. Dave?
Can I get a copy of...